Good evening. It's good to see you all here tonight. My name is Greg Ferris and I am President of Forney ISD Board of Trustees. I do hereby call this meeting to order. It is now 6:02 PM. We do have a quorum present and the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. These monthly meetings are open to the public. Although those meetings are public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Again, thank you for being here tonight. Now, if you would join me, we're going to have our invocation. Tonight's invocation will be led by Kirk Lukey. Kirk Lukey joined the staff at First Baptist Church in Forney in 1992. Before coming to Forney, he served at San Jacinto Baptist Church and Bolton Street Baptist Church, both in Amarillo. Kirk received his Bachelor's of Science degree from Liberty University in 1995. He and his wife Kathy are married, have been married since 1988 and have four sons, who have all graduated from Forney ISD. Kathy is currently the Dean of Students at Griffin Elementary. Kirk has served as a minister to students for 19 years prior to becoming the young, adult and missions pastor. First Baptist Forney is very active in the Forney ISD. They are adopting Ray Intermediate, Smith Intermediate and Griffin Elementary. We're thankful to Kirk and First Baptist Forney for being a member of our Forney family. So please rise.
So Greg, we want to thank you for today. God be thankful for the rest of life that you give each one of us. God, we don't want to take that for granted. So God, I pray that we use our lives to the advancement of your people on this earth in order to be respected, respected and loved. And God, we bring you glory on because of that. And God, we want to lift up the Forney ISD right now and forward as a meeting tonight if you were just to be here, Lord, and your presence would be here, all those veterans of the state, and they would just be in their heart and full love and Lord, they'd thank to get accomplished through your promise. So God, just work with you as long as you can. God, we just so grateful and thankful to be here tonight and all the love you give. Thank you, Pastor, Father, Son, and Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. Let me see that. Moving on then to item B. At this time, I'd like to act Dr. Barbie Knack, Principal of Ray Intermediate, to introduce our Secondary Student of the Month, who will lead our U.S. pledge, followed by Ms. Jenny Harstrom, Principal of Lewis Elementary, to introduce our Elementary Student of the Month.
All right. Good evening. And I'm going to recognize our student of the month, but she is out of town. She's in Maine at a wedding for a family member, so we're still going to recognize her. She will be leading the pledge via video, so. But I'm excited to recognize Mary Mosley. She was a Claiborne Cowboy at one point, so Ms. Crabtree may remember her. Mary's a sixth grade student at Ray. Mary is the daughter of Chris and Karen Mosley. Outside of school, Mary enjoys going to eat with her parents, watching anime and TikTok videos and traveling with her parents. At school, Mary is a part of our Ray Honor Society and plays the clarinet in the Ray Band. She also plans to participate in band through middle school and high school, so we won't be seeing much of her because she'll be banned practicing all the time. Her favorite subject in school is math, and she likes to be able to see all of her friends either in classroom or in transition between classes. After high school, Mary would like to attend Yale or Harvard and study to become a doctor or lawyer. She did come in with a Texas sweatshirt on, and I had my A&amp;M shirt on, so we had some good talks about the rivalry between the two. When nominated for this honor, the staff had this to say about Mary. Mary is always willing to go the extra mile to help out her friends and other students. She is always happy and is a good role model to other students. She's a leader in her classes, both academically and socially. Mary is just a true bright light in our building. We can't wait to see what this Ray Eagle holds in her future. So we'll celebrate her. We can clap for her, but she's not here. I'll give her a copy of everything that we are giving her today. Dr. Terry, you're going to get to come over and take a picture with her because I told her that you would do that. I committed that to you, so sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. (APPLAUSE). Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Dr. Terry, my student is coming, so hopefully we'll see him when he comes in and we can give him a round of applause and have a picture made at some point. He's getting to experience some of Forney's fun traffic situations. You know Louis is a little bit out there. Okay, so I would like to present our October Student of the Month is our fourth grade Blake Banks. His, he has mother and father, Mr. and Mrs. Banks, and he also has a younger brother on our campus as well as two older siblings. But he puts forth his best effort on all classroom assignments and continually strives to become a better student every day. Teachers indicate that he is very respectful, considerate, hardworking, and has a very gentle spirit. It has been mentioned that he is quite the gentleman, too, always helping other students and staff by holding the door and lending a helpful hand. He has a wonderful attitude, never questions a teacher's instructions, and always has a smile on his face. So we'll have to check and see when he comes through with the traffic if he's still got the smile on his face. Blake sets a great example for his peers by being patient, kind and helpful. The compassion he shows to others is evident and acknowledged by his teachers. He makes great choices and follows all parts of the social contract created by him and his classmates. One of his former teachers told me that he is a leader in and out of the classroom. He exemplifies all the qualities they talk about during guidance lessons. In school, Blake's favorite subject is math. In his free time, he enjoys playing soccer, basketball, video games and riding his scooter. Ultimately, Blake has dreams of playing basketball professionally. Blake Banks was chosen to represent Lewis Elementary as our Student of the Month because he exemplifies the spirit of a model leopard and we couldn't be more proud of him.
So I guess we will rise for our pledges.
Yes, we have a video for the U.S.
Video there and the flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Can we do it again? Yeah.
No, this is not.
He may be seated.
He's precious though.
Y'all can be seated. At this time then we'll move on to item number four, recognitions. Dr. Judy Weber, to introduce our staff recognitions.
It's such a great time of year to take a few minutes and honor the people sitting right here beside me before we call their names and hand them a little gift. I want to tell you a very quick story about them and their selfless teamwork. We planned a very special principals' meeting yesterday, and we're trying to incorporate more fun into our meetings because, well, they're meetings. And so we planned something for them with the big giant pink volleyball, some teamwork, trying to get them to also compete and maybe earn spots to get some free registrations to sign up school teams. And within the first two minutes, that administrator lost their wedding ring.
Oh.
And the team said, forget the ball, we're going to find the ring. And they searched and they searched. And they searched. And one of the administrators said, well, wait a minute, we have a club or organization that has metal detectors. So they ran and got it, and the team found the wedding ring. One of our fearless leaders, and so I just wanted to share that. And one more little thing, we gave them little gifts. We're always trying to find ways to say thank you. So we put together, it's, you know, fall and it's candy season, little gifts for our administrators to have on their desk when a teacher's upset or a kid's upset. And one of our administrators today used it for prizes for their staff as they had a little contest. So something that didn't come out of their pocket. But before they even had a chance to eat the candy, Abrams Malone is giving it out to her teachers as a gift so that she can use it for herself or her class. And so just some success stories of the teamwork and great things that these people do, and it's a privilege to work with them. So we've got a little gift for you tonight we'll hand out. We'll get your picture taken, and it's just a little way to say thank you guys for all you do. Thank you for coming together as a team this year, and thank you for caring for our students. And we actually have them in order of how you pass them out, Dr. Terry, to try to make it a little easier for you. So we'll start off, of course, in alphabetical by campus, and that would be Courtney Parker from Blackburn Elementary.
(APPLAUSE).
And then Angela Abrams Malone from Claiborne Elementary. Rachel Bonner from Criswell Elementary. Then Lloyd Ashcraft from Crosby Elementary. And Chrissy Crabtree from Griffin Elementary. Lori Branch from Henderson Elementary. Nancy McRoy from Johnson Elementary. The picture will be different next year, Nancy up there with a different school behind there. Jenny Harstrom from Lewis Elementary. Moving on to intermediate, Dr. Barbie Knack from Ray Intermediate. Brenda Lopez from Rhodes Intermediate. Courtney Rodriguez from Smith Intermediate. Moving on to our middle schools, Judith Willis from Brown Middle School. And Molly Pearl from Jackson Middle School. Josh Garcia from Warren Middle School. And moving into our secondary schools, we have Dr. Jonathan Campbell from Forney High School. We have Michael Jung, the Ring Bearer, here at North Forney High School. And the leader of a K-12 school, Dr. Pamela Luttrell. Amazing group of people, so have to squish together to get a photo of this group, but what a beautiful group of people to work with, taking care of our children and our families and really our community. So thank you guys for all you do. (APPLAUSE).
(APPLAUSE). Do you need one of the sides? Hand it up inside.
Let's congratulate Mr. Blake Banks, fourth grade student of the month at Lewis. (APPLAUSE). We do have football games tonight, so we'll dismiss our principals. Well, we do thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for letting us honor our staff and the hard work that they do every day. So we're going to move on now to our reports. It's item number six. The next four reports are reports only, require no action from the board. First, we have six A's, our monthly financial report. This time, Mr. Chase will present the monthly financials.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. The monthly financial report for the month ending August 2021 was included in your board packet for review. Just beginning with the general fund, the highlights include year-to-date collections of 1.8 million or 1% of the annual estimate. Now, we received 7.6 million in state aid payments for the month, but this revenue was actually recognized in the prior year because it was based on student attendance and tax collections from the prior year. So for comparative purposes, the same point in time last year, we were also at 1%, so we're tracking along pretty well as far as revenue goes. Moving on to expenditures, a year-to-date expenditures in the general fund was 19.9 million or 15% of the annual appropriation. Included in the 19.9 million spent was 2.3 million of capital outlay. Specifically, this amount was spent on furniture for Jackson Middle and Rhodes Intermediate. The source of the capital outlay spending was from our tax notes that we sold back in 2020. District currently has about $28,000 of those tax notes remaining, and those are currently earmarked for security aid projects that are currently underway. In fact, they're, I think they're about completed, so probably next month or so, our tax notes will be fully expended. So for comparative purposes, at the same point in time last year, we had 14% expended, so again, we're tracking along pretty well in the general fund. Moving on to food service, year-to-date revenue was 94,000 or 2% of the annual revenue estimate. Included in the year-to-date revenue was just 4,000 of federal reimbursements for summer school meals served and $72,000 for all the cart sales. Now, all the cart sales are for such things like ice cream and chips, pizza, and things that are separate from the free plate lunch that we actually offer this year. And so we actually expect to get reimbursed for the month of August for the two weeks that we actually had a full free service, about $300,000, which is about what it was for a full month last year. So, you know, in a full month this year, we should expect or would anticipate about $600,000 in collections at this point. So with all that said, and just looking at the forecast for the year, I don't think we're going to have a whole lot of problem meeting our revenue estimate in the food service fund. In fact, we'll probably actually exceed it a little bit. Moving on to the expenditures and the food service, we had $340,000 or 7% of the annual estimate spent. And again, for comparative purposes, we were about that same percentage spent last year. Finally, in the debt service fund, we had collections to date of 247,000 or 1% of the annual revenue estimate. Included in the year-to-date total was 95,000 in state aid from EDA or in IFA, settle-up payments from prior years. Now, the district submitted a request to adjust prior year property values based on a tax role adjustment that occurred throughout those years. And since our property values were reduced, the state aid payments increased for those years, so that's why we got the $95,000. For comparative purposes, again, we were at 1% collected in the prior year. And finally, in the expenditures, we collected or spent, actually took 20.8 million, which is 69% of the amount of annual appropriation. We did have cash redemption that was included in that 20.8 million that we spent in August, as you'll remember. That cash redemption was scheduled to happen, and we saved $6.3 million in future interest expense or avoided that much in future interest expense by doing that cash redemption. So we had pretty good value for the district in doing that. And finally, the prior year expenses at this same point in time was 72%, which, again, we're tracking along exactly where we expect to be this time of year. And then finally, with the cash investments on hand in the general fund, food service, debt service, capital projects, total 97.8 million. And that's the financial report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Can you move on to summary of finance update?
Yeah, this is the time of year that we talk about our near-final summaries of finances. And just by way of review, the summary of finances is the report that the state publishes that basically itemizes out what the district is entitled to receive in state aid. And this time of year is when they actually have our final student attendance data for the year, as well as our final tax collections and property values. And so in that, those two columns that you see in the report, one is labeled LPE, which is Legislative Planning Estimate, and the other one's labeled NF, which is the near-final. And the NF column is basically what we actually earned and will be paid on for the year. Just to start out with, we were paid based on a refined ADA of 12,158 for the year. We actually turned in, we actually turned in slightly more than what's listed there because we had school attendance at home this year, and what they did is they looked at our prior year history of average daily attendance, and they would not allow our attendance rate to go any higher than that as far as what they paid us on. So we turned in, I think, our near-final summaries, our ADA was actually 12,200 or something like that, so they knocked it down about 20 kids, not a lot, but it did come down a little bit. But as you'll also remember, we talked a lot during the year about the fact that they were going to hold us harmless on ADA and actually pay us on a number if we didn't reach that. Well, the numbers that we actually turned in, we actually received more money than we would have if we had got the whole harmless ADA amount. So we actually got our actual numbers are in the funding formula, and they did not offset our funding with federal dollars. The federal dollars that they flowed to us through the ESTER grant, the ESTER II grant, we get to keep 100% of that, and it's not used to offset the funding formula. So just moving on, on the next part of the summaries of finances, where the property values, they updated that with the 5.5 billion, which is what our property values totaled for this past year. And then, when it's all said and done, and they add it all together, we were entitled to receive 57 million dollars and change there. So when you look at, and we actually got a little bit of EDA money as well, but that's that amount is really for additional state aid for the homestead exemption. It's really not true EDA funds, but that's how they flow us the payments when they cut, they increase the homestead exemption from 15,000 to 25,000. That loss that we, you know, had taken during that year that they actually did that, they kind of are flowing that through year over year to figure out how much aid that we, or money, tax revenue that we lose because of it, and they flow the difference to us through the EDA funding formula. But just finally looking at where we're at as far as the end of the year, we actually, on the FSP side of the things, we were entitled to receive 51.7 million. We actually, as far as the LPE side, the way they flowed the cash to us through the month of August, we actually got 49.1 million, and so we were underpaid by 2.7 million. On this underpayment, we didn't collect it within 60 days after the fiscal year ends. And so I think we got it on September the 27th, if my memory serves me correctly, which is the Monday after our regular state aid payment comes. But we did receive the money. It's just we had to recognize it in this current fiscal year that we're in because we didn't get it in time to recognize it in the prior year. And so I've just basically summarized everything that I just said there. I won't read that again, but just moving on, one thing I would like to point out here is, and this is on the current year summaries of finances, just switching gears from last year to this year, one of the requirements that the state's kind of put in place now, they want us to discuss with the board the relationship of property values and how it impacts state funding. And it has an inverse relationship in that, as property values go up, our state funding goes down. In this current year, what they're using for our property value estimate in the formula right now is they're assuming that our values only grew 1.8%, and as you know, they've grown a lot more. And so just kind of going through that, what that means for us, and just know before I say this, is that we did our own estimates, and our estimates are based on what we believe the actual will be. So although we will get, you know, the funding based on this LPE estimate over here on the left side, you know, we won't, actually, they'll actually adjust it this year. They started doing that about March or so. They'll actually plug in our actual property values and make the adjustment prospectively from there. So in any rate, as you can see, if, I think districts in years past might have gotten themselves into some trouble if they just took what was on that summaries of finances on that legislative payment estimate side and budgeted that as their revenue, and also budgeted what the certified value that came from the county chief appraiser. And so if you were to do that, we would get to 123 million in revenues, but after the adjustments made and we actually put in what our actual property tax collections would be, then our state aid, as you can see, it gets adjusted down by 7.6 million. And so again, just want to stress to the board, we did not base our budget on the 66 million state aid payment. It's been adjusted to what we believe our actual allocation will be, and so, you know, we're not going to have a problem with having overestimated our revenues this year. But that's the summary of the financial report. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry?
I'd just like to add one thing. John mentioned this, but just to point out, I think it's something to be noted. The "hold harmless" that we did not have to absorb through our ESTER II was about a million two, I believe, John, correct? We were estimating that we would have lost in ESTER II. That's attributed to the extreme hard work of our staff and our students, our teachers last year, when they were able to really flip into a virtual setting to ensure that these kids were able to attend, even if they were at home, our face-to-face ADA counts were up. So that's, I just wanted to point out, that's a million two that our district receives that maybe other districts who didn't have as much success with their ADA are having to then go absorb back to the state. So just to commend our staff on that, a million two's a lot, and that's attributed to their hard work and our kids coming to school and parents working hard on them, too.
I think there were several, I mean, just to your point, there were several districts that actually did not get, had the ADA, maintained their ADA from year to year. They actually had some losses, and so we really did do a great job, you know, getting the tenants up, making sure kids were in school and that kind of thing.
Thank you, John. Move on then to six C, which is our Forney Academy to Certified Teachers. This time, Dr. Weber will present the new Forney Academy for Certification.
This is a really exciting report that we're going to deliver to you tonight because it's about something that's new. And Forney has always been an innovative district, finding solutions that meet our needs. And so I'm going to invite Leslie Rader up. She's going to really explain the details of our Forney Academy to Certified Teachers. She's really spearheading this, taking it and doing a great job helping us start a new program to fulfill a very, very dire need in our district. So take it away, Leslie.
Thank you, Dr. Weber. Well, most great ideas come out of challenges, so I will present a couple of challenges that are facing education. Back in 2016, the Department of Education started sending out information to districts about teacher supply and shortages that they were forecasting. So the blue line shows the supply decreasing while the demand is going to continue to increase for teachers. We've also been notified that teacher enrollment program participation is down by about 35% across the country. And at the same time, student enrollment in public education continues to grow. The last bit of national data shows the decrease both in enrollment and teacher preparation programs as well as completion of those programs. When you drill down to the state data, as far back as 2014, TEA began notifying districts that a teacher shortage was on the way. We were down by 27% with certified teachers at that time, and we have continued that trend. And when you look at Forney ISD, there's another exciting challenge that we have in our district. So there are three different enrollment projections on the screen. In yellow, those are the projections that our district was provided back in 2016. The red line shows the updated projections we received in 2019, and that lovely blue line is the projection that we received about two weeks ago for our student enrollment numbers. And as you can see, there are some challenges when we're growing that quickly, and that is really where the idea of the FACT program came. This summer, we realized that hiring was not as easy as it has been in the past, and we got a lot of district employees in the room and started to brainstorm some ideas. How can we create some short-term and some long-term solutions for our district to ensure that we have outstanding educators in our classroom with our students? So the FACT program is the Forney Academy to Certified Teachers, and there are really three separate programs. And there are really three separate programs under this umbrella. So the first is our Amplify program, which we've had a chance to kick off. We created a partnership with TeachWorthy. They are an affiliate with the Flippin Group, who already does a lot of good work in our district. And the idea of this program is we already have people in the district in teaching roles and in paraprofessional support roles that have their bachelor's degree. They just lack their teacher certification. And so step one was, we want to support those people as they go through that certification process. Typically, an employee does that on their own through a private company. We have put some structures in place where we can support them, not only in studying for their content test, but taking that test and passing it and then completing their coursework. So that by the spring season, we know if that teacher would be certified and prepared to be in the classroom the following year. So this one we have kicked off, and we have had a lot of interest in people already enrolling with our partner, which is TeachWorthy. The second program, which we've titled Empower, is, I think, the most impactful on our community and really values the outstanding work that we have of some employees that are on our campuses now. So this, this program really looks to building up outstanding employees that are already currently working in Forney ISD. And they've proven in their teacher-like roles that they have the ability to grow our children, to build relationships with them, and we see the capacity for them to be a certified teacher. So this program, through a partnership with Higher Education, allows these paraprofessionals to begin working on their bachelor's degree. And not only are they working on their bachelor's degree through the university, through a partnership that we've been able to develop, they will be given credit for Forney ISD courses that they take. So when we train them on how to teach early reading skills, or we train them on classroom management and behavior techniques, they will be able to receive some college credit for that work that they're experiencing and actually enacting in, in our campuses. So this one is, it's pretty life-changing for those that apply and, and become part of the program. And the final, probably most long-term solution is a focus on our high school students. Currently, our high school students have the opportunity to earn up to an associate's degree. We want to really focus in on our students who have selected the education and training pathway. Those students would receive support throughout high school. We would do a lot of marketing to them and their families because at the end of this program, a high school student could begin coursework in ninth grade. And two years out of high school, they could have a degree that was fully funded through the program, and they never had to leave Forney ISD to make that happen. So these three programs, really, they're innovative pathways to teacher certification that a lot of other districts, I think, they'll, they'll get here eventually. But we're on the, the front edge of this because we saw a problem and we saw some challenges. And it really just meets our mission of inspiring students through innovative education. So in regards to the three programs, under FACT, are there any questions that Dr. Weber and I could answer?
Thank you, Ms. Rader. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry?
I'd just like to add one thing. I'm just really proud of this program. I think, as Leslie said, there's, there's such an impact to our community. And that's, it's, teaching's a very difficult job. And people seem to be coming in and out of the profession very fast. The pandemic has, has obviously caused even more challenges with that. And so being able to really dig deep into the community that we have and try and grow our own teachers here. We feel this is not only a grow program, but a retain program for the investment that we'll have in this staff because of the investment they have in this community. So thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Judy. Thanks to our team who've been working on this. I do think this will be a model that other districts have already shown interest in, and we're very excited about being able to implement this pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate that as a board. We appreciate all of you guys being proactive and, and developing these great life-changing solutions. So thank you so much. Moving on to six D, we have our Forney ISD Comprehensive Safety and Wellness Plan Update. Ms. Kristin Zastepool, Executive Director of Marketing Communications, will lead us and introduce some of the other speakers. Kristin?
Good evening. Thank you for letting us come before you tonight. As you know, every time about this year in October, we usually come to you and present safety updates from our district. Usually, Mr. Gere stands up here. This year, we thought we would take a little bit different approach and share with you, there's so much more that goes into our safety and wellness initiatives. And so there's going to be several of us presenting to you this evening with all that we have going on. So as you know, our district, at the core of what we do is relationships first. We believe in connecting with kids is the most important thing that we can do. You know that a basic need that we all have and a sense of, is a sense of safety in, in our schools, in our community, in our homes. And if we're not safe, then we, we can't reach those higher levels, right? The relationship needs, the future ready needs. So I think most of us are familiar with Maslow's hierarchy. And so we are, here at the district, are tasked with starting and building those all the way up. So we're not just in it to try to fulfill one of those needs, but all of those needs. And it takes more than just us to provide all of these things for our kids. Talent development, physical health, basic needs, character development. You have seen our net philosophy many times over the years, that we want all of our students to have a plan and a purpose to be connected. And it's important that in order to do this, that as they learn along the way, we build safety nets to catch them as they're learning and they might struggle and fall. So as we build those nets, one slide you probably haven't seen is who is building those nets? Because it's not just us as the district. It's our staff who are building those relationships every day in the classroom, which is the core of what we believe. Our churches and service organizations that partner with us to provide for our kids, our parents and families, our community, our business partners. It takes all of us to provide these things for our kids, working together. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Rick Gere to talk about our human capital.
Thank you, Kristin. The district created its own district police department in the summer of two thousand twenty. We are very thankful for the outstanding leadership of Chief Sanders and Captain Saunders there in the back in the development of our department. Our campus officers work with our school administrators and district personnel and are responsible for many aspects of the campus security and law enforcement. At our high school campuses, we have enlisted a third-party source to provide security officers to protect the safety and welfare of students as an additional uniformed presence on campus. They actively patrol our high school campuses, monitoring student behavior, securing buildings and property, and helping maintain order during our events. In addition, Forney ISD just designated Officer Jill Smith to oversee the district's emergency operations. Three years ago, Forney ISD enlisted the services of Restorative Liaisons. All restorative liaisons on Forney ISD campuses have been trained by the Texas Education Agency. Teachers and support staff on select campuses have participated in community-building circles. Teachers who feel proficient are conducting their own restorative activities in their classrooms. Restorative liaisons are actively conducting community-building activities, harm repair circles, and family group counseling circles. We have the most outstanding health services department, I believe, in the state of Texas, led by Ms. Stacy Brown. She's our director. They consistently stay up to date with ever-evolving public health guidance from the TEA, from Dishes, and CDC. Our nurses at each campus monitor all reported COVID cases and collaborates with all departments to promote student health and safety. Also, they have been providing a weekly, weekly COVID vaccine clinic for our community. Their wellness efforts continue to support all staff and students with flu shots, vision van, and many, many more items.
In efforts to provide additional mental health support for our campuses, Forney ISD employs student support counselors for our campuses. These counselors have a background in social work or hold an LPC certification. These counselors hold circles, care groups, and assist campuses with all threat assessments. And we would be remiss without mentioning our administrators, staff, and teachers, and the positive impact that they have on creating a positive and safe culture on our campuses.
Guess I should have introduced Robin Pierce. Robin and I are kind of tag teaming this because our circles do align quite a bit. The next is that we would like to discuss a little bit, to share with you a little bit about our programs and our initiatives. Forney ISD uses the Secured Mobility Authorized Ridership Technology, which is known as SmartTag system, to provide accountability for all our students who ride the bus to and from school. Also, Forney ISD students grades five through twelve are required, required to wear an ID badge to ensure safety and security on school campuses and facilities. We implemented a threat assessment system that is a multi-tier support program or safety net for all students identified as being a threat or a potential threat to themselves or others. Information about the district's bullying prevention program can be found on our district's website. Information and resources are being updated regularly to provide stakeholders with helpful information. Research will show you that there are three key components to any bullying prevention program. Character development, conflict resolution, and acquiring empathy. After researching programs implemented by other school districts, none had the comprehensive approach that Forney ISD does. Bullying is strictly prohibited in Forney ISD schools. Our plan to combat bullying includes the procedures and techniques implemented and provided through Capturing Kids' Hearts, our restorative practices, and through our IRL curriculum. Difficult to say. Robin will share a little bit more about that in just a minute. If you have a child's heart, you have their mind, is a core belief of the Capturing Kids' Heart program. Forney ISD will continue to partner with the Flippin Group to give our staff the skills to transform our classrooms and campuses into high-achieving centers of learning where kids really want to attend school, to increase student engagement and build a culture of success. Capturing Kids' Hearts is a set of processes developed by the Flippin Group intended to create, first and foremost, healthy relationships between adults and youth. It is designed to strengthen students' connection by two things. One, increasing protective factors, including that positive character development, strong bonds with the teachers, and consistently enforced behavioral agreements. Second, it decreases the risk factors, such as inappropriate behavior and poor social coping skills. Restorative practices, which is the second tier of this bullying prevention program, are based on intentionally crafted methods of communication created around specific themes, which include the input of all participants in an orderly fashion. Restorative practices seek to repair harm. They strive to create a sense of community responsibility with a strong emphasis on direct communication. Senate Bill one seventy-nine, Davis Law, expanded authority to school districts, in many cases, to look at cyberbullying off-campus as well as the bullying that occurred on-campus. Davis Law also makes it possible for students to anonymously report an incident of any type of bullying or including cyberbullying. Through our anonymous alerts link in mobile app, students or parents in the school community can anonymously submit any suspicious activity, bullying, or other student-related issues to a school administrator and/or a campus officer. Forney ISD also just renewed our agreement with the Coppin County Crime Stoppers this summer, to create another anonymous reporting format for after-hours reporting. Additional programs that the district utilizes to support struggling students are through what we call Pathways and Connect. The Pathways Program is a specialized, non-traditional classroom designed to assist students grade K through two. The focus is on positive behavioral interventions designed for students exhibiting difficulties in the classroom. Connect is an alternative education program with the goal of helping ninth and tenth-grade students who are currently struggling with success in a traditional educational setting. I'd like to say, take a moment just to say a special thank you to Dr. Pam Luttrell and her team for their hard work and dedication in developing these programs.
Securely provides real-time, twenty-four-seven scanning of emails, documents, and drive to, and our Google Drive to notify, to send notifications of cyberbullying, suicide, violence. Also securely acts as a web filtering system to prevent our students from accessing certain websites. It can also be used as a classroom management tool for our teachers. The administrative team receives notifications of these alerts and follows up with students to investigate all situations. IRL, super excited. Forney ISD is proud to introduce our fifth core course called Inroll Life, or IRL. Based on research, the most influential and impactful age group to teach character development are ages nine through thirteen, which is why we have partnered with the Flippin Group to develop the IRL curriculum that all of our Forney ISD fifth through eighth grade, grade students are currently taking. This student-centered course utilizes CKH's principles and incorporates character development, leadership skills, educational career pathways, as well as personal finance. Topics that are focused on range from self-control, acceptance, conflict resolution, empathy, interaction with others, healthy relationships, and future goals for our students. Mental health awareness. In Forney ISD, we focus on five aspects of mental health education in our schools. One, talking about mental health with our students, providing, providing appropriate training for our teachers and staff, incorporating mental health information into teaching, providing helpful tools for our students, and taking care of our students, teachers, staff, and families. Common Sense Media District, we are a common sense media district, which that means that our common sense curriculum supports a safe and responsible use of technology. This, this certification equips us to educate all students with the critical thinking skills needed to make responsible and ethical decisions when facing digital dilemmas online. Each of our Forney ISD campuses qualifies as a common sense campus, and Forney ISD has been a common sense district for the past five years. Parental resources can be accessed through our Forney ISD Digital Citizenship Page.
We'd like to talk a little bit about the collaborative efforts of our, of our teams. The district adopted the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocols for Emergency Response and the Standard Reunification Method per the recommendation of our Safety and Security Committee. We developed a community-wide collaboration with our first responders to strengthen our relationships and assure the most efficient responses if any emergencies or crises were to occur within the Forney ISD facilities. Governmental officials, school district administrators, and representatives from all, all law enforcement agencies in our county have formed a task force that meets regularly to solve community safety issues. Once, one of the goals of this task force is to develop and strengthen partnerships with local safety agencies to engage in joint training, collaboration, and information sharing. I know Sheriff Beavers and our county commissioner, Skeet Phillips, are part of that committee as well as Dr. Terry and Chief Sanders. The district safety task force is also, we maintain, maintain that within the district. The charge for this team is five-fold. To facilitate the development of district goals and initiatives to improve school safety, to identify current conditions and root causes, to respond to needs of staff, students, and the community, to explore the further development of safety conditions, and to propose recommendations to the superintendent and board for future work. The board establishes a local school health advisory council to assist the district in ensuring that local community values are reflected in the district's health education instruction. Our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee are a passionate group of community stakeholders who have been tasked with raising cultural awareness and creating an inclusive learning community for all. One representative from each campus is Process Champions, which is the group or the team to ensure the implementation of CKH. One representative from the cohort have been working over the last year and a half to formulate action steps from five categories developed by the design team. One, accountability. Two, with safety, recruitment and staff retention. Three, behavior management. Four, in establishing, establishing values for each campus. Their mission statement reads, "To foster a culture of excellence intended to build positive relationships, embed a safe, structured environment for learning, and empower our diverse population to strive for success."
We currently have a district and campus crisis teams within our district. These teams attend specific specialized training throughout the summer and the school year to help schools with any crisis situation. So if any crisis situation happens on a school, we disperse the team. So if any crisis situation happens on a school, we disperse the team immediately to that campus to help with the situation. Parent informational seminars. Each campus will provide a minimum of two parent informational sessions each quarter that will focus on resources, tips, strategies, and for ensuring that their child's success within the district.
We're going to kind of take the rear here and talk a little bit about our facilities and some safety and security upgrades we've done in those areas. As you know, we were able to provide free breakfast and lunch for 100% of our students regardless of their family income for the 21-22 school year. That was made possible from a grant from the Department of Agriculture. This program allows all of our kids, no matter what, to be able to get a good meal for both breakfast and lunch. Oops, sorry. They didn't let me, they didn't give me bullets. In addition, we've enhanced some of our safety cleaning protocols. We've installed hand sanitizing stations in every single one of our classrooms throughout the district. And additionally, our cleaning crew is doing extra cleanings in the high-impact areas, the large gathering areas, and every night they're spraying all of our rooms and all of our core facilities with Virex disinfectant to ensure a safe school building for our kids. Every one of our Forney ISD campuses has a secured entrance that requires entry to be granted through our intercom system, our 3M intercom system. To further increase our campus security, we initiated keyless badging several years back. The system not only limits the number of people who have a physical key to the building, but it also allows the district to immediately lock all of those electrified doors and stop all access from external visitors with just the push of a button. Well, if that button is pushed, my badge no longer works, so it completely secures those buildings. Through our 2019 bond, Forney ISD was able to improve the perimeter and security on several of our campuses and physical plants by adding additional fencing and electronic gates. These additions allow building access to be limited during the day and increase campus security. In addition, Forney ISD added extended roadways at Henderson and Criswell to increase stacking space and get parents off of the city streets. We also added additional exits at Brown and Smith, which allow better access for emergency vehicles. And finally, we've added sidewalks and dedicated roadways at Jackson Roads. And each of these improvements have provided increased security and better flow of traffic for our citizens. And finally, Forney ISD has updated our camera systems in all of our buses, as well as the interior cameras in all of our buildings. And after Christmas, we'll start our exterior camera upgrade where we will put new cameras on the exterior of our buildings, other than the new builds, they already have them. This will allow us to have a little better coverage and some enhanced capabilities than we have currently. And I believe that ends the report. Kristen, you going?
Yep. So, didn't quite put you at the end.
All right.
So, for communications and engagement, our team actually does a lot with our community partnerships. We have the privilege of having that fall under our circle, and so we meet monthly with our PTO presidents, our booster clubs, our pastors. We have a pastors and principals group. We meet with our retired educators, our realtors, and we try to make connections with them that will help them as well as help our district, our community, our students. So through that, we partner with, also with for-profit companies, but we do a lot of things with our Resource Fair, our Food Drive, our Season of Giving with our Angel Tree, and we also have ongoing emergency needs. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that you don't always see, or you don't always know about, or we don't always necessarily have a specific name for that program, but if we have a student that has a house fire over the weekend, or the loss of a family member, you will often see a text thread start, and we'll start with our counseling team. Do we have counselors available? What do they need? I've known Ms. Morrisak to deliver a Chromebook here when needed over the weekend. So, we try to make sure we are meeting every one of those needs that we possibly can as a district. We've called on our churches to provide hotel rooms and gift cards for families who've been in need as well, and set up funds. I myself have been blessed with a fund that was set with Forney Community Ministries while my own son was battling leukemia, and that's what we do, not just for our kids, but our staff members as well. So, it's very near and dear to my heart as well to get to share that with you, and we have an amazing team that does that, and we are so grateful to our community for that. Our Communications Engagement Team also is responsible for sending out all of the alerts. We use a lot of different channels because we know one channel is not going to reach everyone, and so we try to make sure that we send things out as much as we can through our mass notification system. We also work with local media as well, but our favorite thing to do is the personal touch, is the community presentations where we meet with everyone monthly. We often send Dr. Terry on a roadshow to present a state of the district during the fall as well, because we really want to see people and get to know them, and really engage with our community, and build those relationships just like we get to do with our kids. In addition, we also have relationships, great relationships with our local communications teams, our first responders teams as well, but we have a city public information officer, a county public information officer, and we also network with other public information officers from surrounding districts and often lend support to each other. So, we also provide ways for the community to get involved in our campus. We send out flyer information. Every year, we send out a survey at the beginning of the year that says, hey, if you're interested in serving on one of these committees, several that Mr. Gere and Ms. Pierce talked about, and parents can sign up for that. We get maybe 400 sign-ups a year. We can't necessarily put all 400 people on those committees, but then we take those names and we share them with the campuses too, to try to get them plugged in in other ways once those committees are filled. So, we are certainly trying to engage as much as we can, and when we started talking about this update, when we talk about our comprehensive safety and wellness plan, it's more than a plan. These actions are constantly working, they're adapting, they're evolving to meet all of our students' needs, and as you know, that can change. I mean, COVID hit and changed everything, so this plan is adaptable to fit the needs of our kids and our community. So, it's kind of a really big picture, but when we get asked every year to present on this, we thought, you know, we really need to give you the big picture of everything that we do with safety and wellness together. So, and I will be glad to answer any questions or ask one of my co-presenters as well.
Thank you, Ms. Vestable. We do appreciate all the presenters tonight. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, do you have anything to add?
No, just very appreciative. I think you guys can see, these guys work very hard. Our number-one priority is the safety of our students and staff, and, you know, they, it's a layered, 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 and more layered approach, and so can't commend this team and their staff enough, our principals and teachers for what they're doing to keep our kids safe every day. So, just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I know that these people do work seven days a week, 25 hours a day. There's something always happening, and so we appreciate all your efforts put into those different parts of that presentation. Moving on to item seven is our public forum. The board will hear comments from the audience only during the public forum portion of the meeting. Individuals wishing to speak to the board have added their name and topic to the sign-up forms, which I have. There will be, the board will allot 25 minutes for the public comments. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to address the board. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, and other community members by name. The board requests that the comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, be courteous and respectful. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, a decision, or operation issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers who have provided detail about their specific complaint will be stopped and will be referred to the district administration for information regarding this process. The board may not respond to any comments made or questions asked from the public. So, I have your signing sheets here. I'll call the names one by one in no particular order. I know some of you have some of the same topics listed, so if you want to defer to your colleague with you and one person speak, that's fine. There will be a clock back there. So, the first name I have here is Brandy Jones. Do you wish to speak to the board?
She has an emergency.
The next one would be Katrina Berkhalter. Okay, thank you. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So, this year, according to the student enrollment projection just shared, there's over 14,000 children that attend school here, and the projections clearly show exponential growth year over year. Children make up 45% to 50% of our entire residential base in Forney. And as we've experienced exponential growth, safety of our children has become more and more compromised. This year alone, the number of safety issues our children have experienced is easily three times the volumes of years past. I've listened to the marketing ads, meeting after meeting, where our city and school officials paint an exciting picture of new growth, new rooftops, new businesses, and even the new opportunity center that's coming. These topics dominate discussions and priority. Tonight, I'm here to talk about a different priority: our children's overall safety, which should be at the very core of how we grow our city and our school district. When our children started school this year, there were lots of changes put in place, including a new two-mile parameter that defines whether or not bus transportation is available. Sadly, we all know about the terrible accident involving young Jackson, who was bicycling home from school and hit by a car. We've already had reports of guns and knives brought to school, and attempted stabbing, children assaulted off-school grounds while walking home, bullies throwing hot sauce in children's eyes, physical assaults on the school bus, heads busted, you name it. It's happening to our kids on and off-school grounds, in the city, in the ETJ, and everywhere. That makes this all of our issue. I reached out to the city council on 8/25 and again on 9/7, and now I'm coming to the school board. My ask is simple: we need accountability and ownership. We need to discuss child safety even before the new rooftops, which equal more heads in schools, and even in advance of the OC, which stands to drive and absorb an amount of revenue back into the district. Lives must be our number-one priority. Our kids are hurting. They're coming home heartbroken with horror stories of their school day. They're begging their parents not to make them go back, and bullying isn't happening in pockets, and parents are not just keyboard warriors telling one side of the story. Statistics say that in our district alone this year, almost 5,000 kids will be victimized and their safety threatened. Our approach in dealing with safety isn't working. The approach in Mansfield didn't work either. We need to tackle what's plaguing our community before a similar tragedy strikes our children. I'm asking for our Board of Trustees to take a stand, to lead a partnership with the city, to create a diversified task force crossing jurisdictional boundaries to help solution our safety issues. I'm also asking you to formally add an agenda item to each meeting until a solid executable plan has been established to address our children's safety. As our elected trustees, will you make this your priority? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Eckert.
Hello, a very good evening to all. My name is Christina. I have four children. Two have already graduated. We've been here for almost 19 years, and I have two still almost graduated from North Forney. 95% of our experience with Forney ISD has been amazing. Thank you all. Y'all have been like moms and dads to my kids, especially to my special-needs kid. But I stand in front of you for one reason, and it has nothing to do with my children, but I want to discuss the future of certain kids. I don't know about you, but I'm tired of reading post comments, news, calling our kids thugs, punks, criminals, calling our community ghetto. I'm also tired to read parents saying that something was taken from their child. But mainly, I'm sick and tired of reading, hearing about shootings, seeing awful fightings happening in school, kids being molested walking home, kids bringing guns to school, kids being pushed into uncoming traffic, but what is unforgivable is hearing about kids committing suicide. I ask that Forney ISD considers making mandatory safety classes to students, parents, and all staff, because putting food on the table and paying the poor bills is not enough. Let's bring in speakers. Let's show the world that Forney cares, that enough is enough. Not one more kid will go up, will go to jail, or be bullied. Working together, we can put an end to a lot of these issues. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Next is Gerald Jones.
Sir, happy to find you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Next in would be, is it Rhonda Moga?
So, I'm actually new to Forney this year. We just moved here in February. The first thing I looked at when I moved to Forney was what the schools were like and what the community was saying about the school, and I actually was afraid for my kids to go to school here because of the bullying issue that I read about here. So, we kept them in Mesquite until the school year end, and we went ahead and transferred them this year. This year alone, my kids have been bullied, hit, pushed, talked about, threatened. My kids are in elementary. I have a third-year-old girl. She come home every day last week crying. Someone told her that they were going to kill her mom. She cried for three days, three days, three days straight. So, I think that bullying is a big issue here in Forney, and I think that it should really be addressed, that parents can feel safe that their kids are going to school, that I don't have to wait till my kid gets home every day and be anxious to ask them, how was your day? And then for them to tell me, this and this happened, even on the bus. My kids had to ride the bus the first year this year, and they come home crying from the bus. They tell me how crazy things are on the bus and how people are not sitting down. Sometimes they get home late because the bus driver has to stop the bus because of what's going on on the bus. And I feel like there's nothing being done about it, and things are being pushed under the rug, and no one's calling me to tell me, hey, this happened today with your student. My kids have to come home and tell me, this happened today at school. I didn't get a phone call. I don't know about it. So, I have to call the school to find out, hey, this happened to my child today, and oh, well, well, we talked about it. My kids tell me that the other kids just say, oh, it was an accident, or this, it's just being pushed under the rug. And I've even gotten involved in the community, done a couple of events here in the community because, even before my kids started going to school here, because I wanted to, I wanted to try to bring the kids together, even outside of school, and I think it's important that we bring the parents together too, and that we held the parents, you know, do more events with the parents, you know, get the parents involved, you know? Do clubs after school or something to get the kids to build a relationship with each other, because that's what's lacking, that these kids don't have a relationship with each other, so they don't respect each other. And this is even happening in the elementary school. So, I want to feel safe. I want my kids to feel safe going to a new school. They were excited to be going to a new school to get there, and now we don't feel safe. You have a lot of people coming into this community who are new, and you don't want, when they look up about the community, they see that it has a big bullying issue. Most people that I talk to who are new to the community, that's the first thing that they looked up was, what's the issue like with bullying? With bullying, and we all saw that that's what the community itself is saying, that no one really cares about the bullying here. So, I really, I ask the board to please make our, make your schools, I love all the things I heard tonight about what you guys are doing, but if we can just address the bullying so that our kids can be safe at school and we can be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm here tonight because of my own experiences dealing with bullying. We just moved to Forney this school year, August 1st to be exact, and my son has already been a repeated victim of bullying. Being new to the town, we don't know anyone yet, and my son rides the bus. He doesn't know many people, so when he is targeted, it's hard to pinpoint the people responsible. I've reported several issues, but every investigation seems to end with the same conclusion. They checked the video and didn't see anything, since I couldn't provide names. When I tell my son to defend himself, the outcome is that it's all his fault, although there's no reports coming in from other parents indicating that. Bus 52 has especially had a lot of complaints this year. I personally have made over five or six alone. I personally witnessed a backpack being thrown from the bus while in motion. When the bus stopped to let the kids off, I told the bus driver, and the Forney ISD police showed up at my house to ticket me for stepping on the bus. To my knowledge, nothing has ever been done to address the backpack being thrown off the bus. Physical contact is constantly occurring on and off the bus, at school, and it bleeds, it continues, taunting and bullying in the neighborhoods, and no one is stepping up to get things under control. My son is seven, and he is dyslexic and has ADHD. There has been 10-year-olds that follow him home and fought him. In fact, as recent as yesterday, my son was taunted, hit in the back, in fear for his life while chased around the classroom by a student who was moved from another class for being a bully. a bully. When I was notified, when I was notified by the school, I was told it wasn't handled correctly, and that the bully was even humiliated by the teacher in the classroom, which most certainly escalated things. I have met with the campus administrators and even put a safety plan in place, but that doesn't seem to help either. There is supposed to be extra security and monitoring of the bus because of all the complaints and issues, yet every single day, there's a new issue. Not only that, my son's smart tag isn't always notifying me before the bus gets to his stop so that I can be there to wait for him. I'm literally afraid of the day I'm not at the bus stop to meet him on time, and as a result, he's victimized and hurt extremely bad. Because honestly, it seems no one cares, and that people are quick to say it didn't happen on school grounds, or I can't help with what happened on the bus. I came tonight to plead with the board. Don't turn a blind eye to the bullying. Please take a stand and keep my son Travion and other kids safe at school, on the buses, and help in the community as well.
Thank you very much, Pamela. The next one we have, Mr. Wayne Pullen.
I came tonight as a deeply concerned parent who's had personal experiences dealing with bullying. Many people follow my personal stories. I tried to work through the system to resolve issues. While I won't go into all the specifics, I raise issues that impacted not only my child but others who rode the bus. I tried to be a good steward and request actions be taken to be sure all kids on the bus were safe. My experiences left me with a feeling that really is, that there really is no accountability. Parents seem to be boxed in if they can even figure out what process is to follow to take action for their children. Sadly, the perception of the community is, safety issues are swept under the rug, not dealt with, and when possible, it seems that the effort is geared more towards trying to strong-arm and hide issues than, rather than genuinely trying to solve them. The city is growing, more schools going up, more crime is happening. During the election season, we, there was lots of talking to the community about the things that were top of mind to them. Child safety was at the top of my list, along with plenty of others in this audience tonight. But I question, where's the action since then? What's the plan to address? We need an immediate plan to assure safety of children now, having to walk or ride bikes further distances to and from school. There's been no heat mapping of hotspots and putting actual monitors in place to keep our kids safe on their journey home. There's no real enforcement of the zero-tolerance policy for bullying. In fact, most times bullying is labeled as mutual combat, when mutual combat requires both parties to agree to fight. We need a plan that includes training, streamlined processes that parents can navigate, real outcomes that show that our leaders care, real enforcement of policies, including smoking on campus, teachers shouldn't be allowed to vape in school, and real action and consequences for bullies. A young man was a victim of repeated escalated bullying in a school which was long overlooked and brushed under the rug. Despite the parents' outcries for help, seems to have taken matters into his own hands yesterday. I'm sure we are all watching the breaking news of the incident in Timberview High School. How many parents in the audience are worried, sick that it's just a matter of time before the headline is the same or worse right here in Fornie? I'm going to end my time tonight with a question to the board. Do you worry like the parents of the district do? Thank you for the time.
Thank you all for sharing tonight. That's all the names I had that signed up. I appreciate your comments, and I hope you found the information tonight insightful. Moving on then to item number eight, our consent agenda. Eight A is approved minutes of September 7th, 2021. Eight B is approved a budget amendment. Eight C, approve the school closure waiver. Eight D, approve the resolution to pay employees due to emergency closures. Eight E, approve hazardous bus routes. Eight F, approve payments to Mesquite Regional Day School for the deaf. And Eight G, approve Encore easement for the Aquatic Center. The board may take action on each of these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move that we approve Consent Agenda items A through G collectively.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Batson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Then moving on to item nine, consideration and possible action, including adoption of a resolution declaring the surplus certain unimproved real property consisting of 15 acres, more or less located adjacent to North Fornie High School at 6170 Falcon Way, authorizing the donation of said real property to the Kaufman County to carry out a public purpose that benefits Fornie ISD. At this time, Ms. Kim Morzak will present the possible approval of the resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferris. I was a mouthful. Fornie ISD is proposing a donation of approximately 15 acres of land to Kaufman County. This land, as you said, is located adjacent to North Fornie High School and will be used for a future county substation. The facility will increase the presence of law enforcement services to schools and neighborhoods within the boundaries of the district, thereby increasing safety for district students and staff. The county facility and the property shall not be used for any detention or persons in custody, nor shall any cells be constructed, installed, operated, or maintained in the county facility. In addition, the facility must contain a classroom to be used for a potential law enforcement or public safety course as part of the district's career and technology education program. We're excited about this partnership with the county and the increased safety benefits it brings to Fornie ISD and our families. This was originally presented to the board as a land lease, but the county would prefer donation of land with the same restrictions that the lease had. We're requesting that authority be granted to the superintendent to negotiate the final details of this land donation with Kaufman County.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Do I have any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, any comments?
Just, just really appreciative of the partnership with the county and excited about, you know, the area out there is obviously not in the city and doesn't have city services. And so, what we've all agreed to is that additional presence out there and the opportunity to have a facility that sits between one school, next to a second school, and possibly even in the future, a third school will be a real benefit, not only to our school system, but also the community as a whole. So, we would recommend approval of the resolution tonight to grant the authority to continue to negotiate this and get this closed and get it built, so.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Do I have any other questions from the board? If you hear none, may I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move the board adopt the following resolution concerning the real property and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a donation contract with Kaufman County and undertake the necessary steps to implement the proposed donation as follows.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Green, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. So, thank you very much. We look forward to this partnership with the county, and at this time, I think we're going to have a photo. If you guys like to come forward.
Yes, sir. We'd like to introduce you Sheriff Beavers, as well as our county commissioner Skeet Phillips and our chief of police, Joe Sanders.
Mr. Beavers, have any word? Do you'd like to say before we have a photo?
No, as always, I greatly appreciate the partnership that we have with Fornie and the great partnership that we have with the police department, with y'all. I think this is going to be a great access for us, and it's going to really help us provide more services over around the school, plus the community as a whole. So, we're really excited, and I can't break ground fast enough. I promise you, we need it over there.
I don't believe we can give him the money fast enough before he can break ground, you know? But we're going to, we're going to make every effort to make sure this is a very fine facility, and y'all are going to be proud of it. The county's going to be proud of it, and I hope it provides even more security for the school district, for the county, and very beneficial to the education of the children and what else is going to take place. So, we're very grateful, and thank y'all very much.
Moving on then to item number 10, consideration possible through of the annual audit. Mr. Chase will present at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight, we have Dan Ton here. He's a partner with Hank and Zee Step, Deaton Ton and Say is the audit firm that does our annual financial audits, has done them for the last six years. And he's here tonight to discuss his review and how the district's financial results ended up this year. So, Dan, if you'd come forward, please.
Dr. Terry, Board of Trustees, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to be able to go over the audit with you. We completed the audit last month, and the audit went very well, was very successful. We didn't have any problems during the audit in terms of getting our questions answered, having access to records, anything of that nature. There were no disagreements with management over any accounting or auditing issues. The district continues to be in very good financial condition. As you know, dealing with the amount of growth that the district has experienced has been a challenge, if you will, financially. But I think you've met that challenge and have a good plan in place, and we'll look at some of the numbers and see the financial condition of the district. Just want to recognize our engagement team really quickly. Three of us, the top three, were here doing the fieldwork. We have a senior staff member who's a CPA that's been with us 13 years, then a staff member and myself, the engagement partner, was here working on the audit, and then one of my partners is the second partner review person. So, this is just kind of a, to show you kind of what we do as part of the audit, and the whole purpose of the audit is in the middle there, to give you an opinion on the financial statements and on your major federal programs. We did render an opinion on the financial statements. It was the, it's what's referred to as an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of opinion that you can get, and this slide shows some of the lower level of opinions, but Fornie received the highest level of assurance. There's two sets of financial statements that you saw in your packet. One is referred to as government-wide financial statements. That's basically a consolidated presentation of all of your funds together. It does include long-term debt and long-term assets such as capital assets. The fund financial statements are more specific on a fund-by-fund basis, general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, et cetera. Those are on a more short-term basis, modified accrual basis, where only current financial resources and liabilities are presented. The government-wide financial statements, I won't go through this in detail. Total assets were 538 million, total liabilities of 637, and then you have some inflows and outflows related to pensions. So, your total net position on a government-wide basis is negative 90.4 million. That negative amount increased or improved by 10.1 million for fiscal year '21, so your net position increased. The reason that that number is negative, there's several reasons. A lot of it has to do with the requirement for the district to record your pension and OPEB liability, OPEB being other post-employment benefits. For a school district in Texas, that is the TRS CARES program for retirees. And you can see on the pension side, that reduced the net position of the district by 18.7 million, and the OPEB or the TRS CARE liability increased the, decreased the net position by another 36.4 million. So, that's a large contribution to the negative net assets. The other major contribution to that is the accreted interest that you have on capital appreciation bonds. On the fund financial statements, again, this is more on a fund-by-fund basis. Your total assets are 165 million. 13.8 million of that was due from the state for state funding. The general fund cash had a balance of 47.8 million. The liabilities totaled 27.9 million, and there was 227,000 of unearned income. None of that was from the state. This is a history of your general fund, fund balance. You can see that for fiscal year '21, you ended the year with 52.9 million of fund balance in the general fund. That was an increase of about 6 million. So, again, a very successful year, and the district is in very good financial condition. You have unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 31.8 million. The remaining portion is assigned for various future projects and for future debt service. But the unassigned fund balance that you do have of 31.8 million represents 30% of your total general fund expenditures. That's a very healthy amount for an unassigned fund balance. It's about three and a half months of operating expenses. This looks at some of the budget-to-actual numbers. I won't go through these in detail. The district ended up very favorable to the budget. You had a budgeted decrease of 9.7 million, but it had an actual increase in fund balance of 6.2. The main difference being, there were several large projects that were budgeted that had just started and were not completed during the year. Your property tax collections increased by 2.5 million. Appraised values increased by 15.9%, and your tax collection rate was 98.94 of the current year levy. That's a very healthy tax collection percentage. This is a representation of your revenues by source. I won't go through those in detail, but revenues were up 1.5%. Your general fund expenditures were 105 million, and this is a representation of the major categories of, that the money was spent in, instruction obviously being the largest category or function, as it's called, with 57.9 million. The debt service fund increased by 2.8 million. The debt service fund increased by 2.8 million. Your ending fund balance in debt service was 28.1 million. Your August 21st debt payment was 20.8 million. School districts generally make semi-annual payments in February and August. So for a June 30 year-end district, you've pretty much got to have that August debt payment already covered plus some, uh, extra, because there's very little tax collections between June 30 and August 15th. We looked at the district's internal controls and compliance over grant programs. We, we take a harder look at internal controls over what are called major federal programs. Um, and we look at the compliance with those major federal programs. I'm happy to report that there were no, uh, financial statement or state or federal compliance findings. My last page asks if there were any questions. I don't know what happened. Are there any questions that I could help, that I could answer?
Any other questions? Is, do you have more to your presentation? Kim, you need technical support? Does he need?
That was it.
Okay, we didn't, we sure didn't cut off.
I just lost the last page somewhere.
Okay.
It just said, are there any questions?
I don't think we have any. Thank you again. You've done a great job as usual.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, explanation.
All right. Well, thank you, and I'd like to thank John and his entire staff. They provide a lot of cooperation and, um, worked very hard to get us the information that we needed.
Appreciate it. Dr. Terry, have any word?
No, just, uh, I would reiterate, John is, uh, and his team have done a great job. And, um, we also want to take a second and thank Dan and his team. Um, if, it's a, a little bit of a challenge to do an audit through a pandemic, uh, just like it's a challenge to do a lot of things. And just wanted to say thank you to you and your team for being flexible and, uh, you know, working with us and our, and our team to, to make the, make sure that last year and this year, we had a successful, uh, experience together. And just thank you for your hard work. We, we do appreciate.
Well, it's been a very challenging year for auditors and for school district personnel with all of the COVID grants and this money and that money. And, um, it seems like the rules change as fast as, uh, they can. And I make a joke that in the last year, finance people don't have time to do their job because they're watching webinars to learn how to do their job. And there's just so much new information out there, and it's a challenge.
Yeah. Dan, thank you. And, um, board, we would, uh, with John's work and, and, uh, Mr. Ton's work, we would recommend that you, uh, accept the, uh, financial, annual financial audit as presented.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your comments, Dr. Terry. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the annual financial audit as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Bateman. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. We appreciate it very much. So moving on then to item 11, closed session. Uh, the board will take, uh, won't go into closed session tonight. We'll move on then to item 12. Consideration and possible approval regarding employment of professional contract personnel. May I have a motion?
Mr.? Professional contract personnel, as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Dobbs on item number 12. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Regan. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Then number 13, consideration and possible action regarding the pursuant sanctions for educators' abandonment of contract. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board find that did cause did not exist for Michaela Monticello and Marcia made their duty, uh, duties to abandon their contracts with Fornie ISD and authorize the superintendent to take all necessary steps to report this matter to the state board for educator certification for brokered action.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Then moving on to item number 14, announcements. You see there's some future dates of meetings. Uh, please take note of the November date, uh, change there. Uh, any other comments or changes we need to be aware of, Dr. Terry?
No, just to reiterate, we did, uh, need to move that November, um, regular meeting back to November 8th, uh, due to state ban marching competition the previous Monday. Other than that, we do have a football game tonight, I think, Mr. Ferris.
There's a game tonight somewhere, I think. Any, any other things on board we need to share? Mr. Jung, do you have your ring on?
It is on.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, with, with nothing missing, I guess we'll call this meeting adjourned. It is 7:38 PM.